Call me to order with roll call.
Hi.
Here.
Branchway. Schulte.
Here.
Gargano.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Friends. Peterson.
Here.
Convinson.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the Atlantic, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council will receive information on non-adjunct topics brought before the council and members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of this meeting. Anyone who's on agenda, wish to be heard. I think we're all here for this thing in general purpose. Consent agenda, one motion approves all consent items. Item one is approved minutes for the meetings held on April tenth and April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And number two proclamation recognizing National Water Safety Month, May twenty twenty-three. See no one from Springfield. And number three approved deny application for temporary Class B, Class B retailers license for the Reesburg Pirates Hotel Baseball League. May twenty-third, May twenty twenty-three through July twenty twenty-three at the Shannon Park seventeen hundred eighth Street. Motion approved. Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by Gargano. All favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. General business, we have three items. Number one is approved denying web fund request from Planky's Pond and Outdoor Learning Center Incorporated for financial assistance to rebuild a parking lot. Request through Stephen Blakeslee. Jake.
Okay, Steve Blakeslee is the mayor which is here for this request. Some of you weren't even on council when we last discussed the web fund. So just really briefly, the web fund is a fund that the city had that was left to us by George Webb.
Herb.
Herb Webb. Herb. Herbert Webb. That was in.
He's not from around here.
I know. The fifties. And it's a trust that the city has through our main bank. And each year, as per the trust agreement, we take in the interest income year after year. And then that money can be granted out to community groups. So a few years ago, we put a hold on the fund in order to save up for the fieldhouse project. So as of today, there's a hundred and seventy-four thousand in there. And then Steve will talk about his request.
Steve, how you doing tonight?
Great.
Good seeing you.
Seeing you. Well, I'm the president of Planky's Pond and Outdoor Learning Center. It's a five oh one C three nonprofit charity. It's been serving the children and handicapped people of Reesburg for forty years next year. And the wells that flow there that are tested twice a year by the state serve, I would say approximately a thousand people getting their drinking water. I mean, it's a steady flow of people going there. And the parking also, Planky's Pond parking also serves as a parking lot for the cars that go to the Smith Conservancy to hike the trail because the city has no parking there and people who hunt in there in the fall. So, and Planky's Pond operates off an endowment fund that was left by Ken Planky. It's at the Community Foundation of South Central Wisconsin in Bearwood. Tim Becker is on the board there and I've been on the board there fifteen years. And we serve forty-five charities and our assets are ten million dollars. But we do like all the Leopold, the Crane Foundation, the Veterans Memorial in Reesburg, their funds are there. So the parking lot at Planky's is now about thirty-five years old and it needs to be redone. And also another project that really needs to be redone is the access to the main artesian well that's there. Because after Rock Springs got flooded, a lot of people come to Reesburg now to get their water. And the elderly people, they have to, you know, take their cars out there because they're filling, you know, gallon, five gallon jugs and they're heavy and stuff for them. And actually, last year to plow our snow and salt the path to the well and on the parking lot, it costs eleven hundred dollars just to plow snow. So some people think, well, what does it cost to operate a fish pond? Well, it costs sixteen hundred dollars a year to mow the lawn, eleven hundred dollars a year to plow the snow, twelve hundred dollars to run the aerators in the pond, accounting six thousand because we have to file a tax return, federal and state, three to five thousand to treat the weeds, a thousand dollars, we have a three million dollar liability insurance, two to three thousand for stocked fish, six to eight hundred a year to put in minnows in the spring and the fall to feed the fish, and six hundred dollars for general maintenance of the pond, like working on the docks, taking out the garbage and stuff like that. And so it costs between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars a year to operate Planky's Pond for the community. And it's been kept private because we can determine who fishes there. And I know the mayor fished there when he was a boy. And.
Lot of memories there.
Four years. So we can, we can say that you, when you're sixteen or if you're not in a wheelchair, you can't fish there. And then we also have capital projects, like a year ago, we, the dock had gotten old and needed, well, just to replace the materials, just to redo the dock costs seven thousand dollars. You know, and we need the, and we need the parking lot. And with this other ramp, we actually, instead of the parking lot, Matthew's got estimated at twenty thousand. And this ramp, which is gonna be concrete and go out and redo the area around the well, that's gonna be like another ten thousand dollars. So there's always, like, we've got ash trees this year, they've gotta come down. That's another sixteen hundred bucks. So we're, you know, we're operating without a lot of help from anybody. But some of these major improvements that need to be done, I'm asking the web fund. And if they have, I mean, I'd really like twenty thousand dollars. Because, you know, those two expenses are thirty thousand and our funds are, are limited. But a lot of you have fished in the pond, you know, when you were kids. And it provides a tremendous service to the city, all the high school kids. We have the fish clinic every year. We bought a thousand children in Reesburg, fish bowls and tackle boxes, all provided free. And that's assisted by the Reesburg Outdoor Club, which puts on that event. So it's a tremendous service to the city. I've been running the pond for twenty-nine years. So if, you know, the web fund could help us with this project, it would be great. Not only by me, but the children and everybody in Reesburg and all that. A lot of elderly people get their drinking water there.
I can, you definitely said everything I was about to say, but you definitely, as a kid growing up, going to get baked from Ken at his place on Main Street there and heading over to the pond. A lot of good memories and my son Dylan fished a whole lot there. Both my kids went to the fishing clinic. That's definitely a gem. And now I'm working where I work, the school district, I drive by there at least five, six times a day. End of the high school and there's always people getting water there. Truly an asset to the city of Reesburg. So thank you for what you do to keep it that way though, Steve.
And has anybody got any questions?
Definitely worthy of assistance.
Yeah, word, state again where most of your funds come from to take care of your yearly expenses.
When Ken Planky died, his estate went to the, at that time, it was, he left it in a trust. But a trust, we actually were paying income tax. So I converted everything to a five oh one C three nonprofit. And then I'm trying to set up the pond because, you know, I'm not gonna live forever. And, you know, somebody, Keith Clip is gonna take over. You know, I've got success, a succession plan. And then JT Mitchell, who's got the body shop, he's agreed because he fished there when he was a kid. So our funds come from, most of the money, there's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars is in the Greater Sauk County Community Foundation of South Central Wisconsin. And each year, we get five percent of the value of the fund at the end of the year. So if the stock market goes up and the fund gets worth three hundred thousand, we get fifteen thousand. If it goes down to two hundred thousand, we get ten thousand. But we can, no one can ever deplete the money because you can never get more than five percent. It's in a designated fund. And, and the fund in Bearwood has a full-time manager that operates it. So I've got, I've got that pretty well set up where nobody can get at it. But I've, you know, there's things I can cut, like, you know, the weeds are a very big expense if they're out of control. But running the aerators in the pond, that's really improved the water quality. My utility bill is a hundred dollars a month, you know, to do that. So, and like, we've got a three million dollar insurance policy, that's like a thousand dollars a year, which, and, you know, we have to mow the lawn and the snow piling. And this year I had him salt around the wells, like Dan Monk used to do some of that. But, you know, he's, everybody's getting old and so I'm trying to set this thing up so it sort of runs on autopilot. And it's, you know, some of these bigger capital expenses, like, I know the parking lot, you know, it's so old and the edges are all getting cracked, the culverts coming in there are bad.
It was flooded twice, so that didn't help at all.
Well, when it flooded, that's another thing we're gonna fix when redo the ramp. The pier is anchored at the shore. So when it went up, those huge pipes out in the water got bent. So we had to reset those with a crane. And then our aerators flooded. So like that year, the flood, that was six thousand bucks to fix it. So we've, we've weathered a lot of, of expenses and, and no one can get at the, the blanky month. Let's say the stock market has a really good year and, because it's not all in the stock market. Their funds are invested in forty percent in CDs and sixty percent in the Vanguard Total Stock Market Index Fund. That's our only investments. And that's Warren Buffett's number one holding is this Vanguard Total Stock Market Index Fund. And that's performed very, very well for us. Everything is very conservative. So, you know, if it goes up fifty thousand dollars, the fund, the pond doesn't get it. They only get the percentage of it. So it's gonna allow the fund to grow over time so that it keeps up with inflation.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Another council discussion.
Question, your honor.
Yes.
I forgive me, but you're gonna have to refresh my memory, Tim. Did we do, take action to put the moratorium on the web fund distribution? Is it something that we're gonna have to rescind or?
No, what we did was, we talked about the moratorium and then we decided that we would still bring projects forward and you guys would make a decision based on the merit of the projects. So I can tell you, right now, at this second, we are okay with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the fieldhouse. So anything over that would be fine as of this second right now.
I understand. And Jacob, would you tell us what that balance is again, please?
Yeah, it's a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Thank you.
Further discussion.
We wouldn't need all of our money this year. I mean, if I had to, I could wait till next year to do it. I mean, if I could get grants over a couple of years and stuff. Because with redoing that, I'll redoing all that cement and stuff. And when that's, like I said, that whole project is gonna cost thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a timeline for that, Steve?
Well, I've, I've been waiting a little bit because I talked to Tim, you know, when the web fund didn't have it. So I, I mean, if it, if it doesn't happen this year, if it goes next year, or if I know it's coming, I can sort of plan for it. But, you know, I guess I'm, we're sort of at the web fund's mercy, I guess. You know, because we're, I mean, if the parking lot's gonna go back this year, no. You know, can we do it next year? Yes. I'd probably go, I wanna go ahead and get the dock and I wanna get that grant cemented. If anybody's been down there, people are driving on the lawn, there's tire tracks.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, because it's in the winter, you know, it's a lot of, the old people, they, I mean, and the young people, if they got, some people have twenty jugs and they back right up to the spring, you know, and it's, it was just a paved, you know, but it's, it's so many people and it's with everything costing so much money, the water's free. I mean, all the high school kids stopped there on the way, you know, to school to get a drink. The city workers stopped there to fill their water jugs. Because the water is, and the state comes now, they called two years ago and they know how many people are there. And so they said, we are, we pay for it, but they come automatically and test the water twice.
Sure.
So, so Steve, you're thinking that this might end up being like a two-year phased project?
It could, you know, depending if, if the financing works that way, yes. We could maybe do the concrete this year and then next year try and do the parking lot.
Well, I would just add that from, you know, the parks side of things. I mean, that's a huge asset to Reesburg that is not part of the public park system, but it, it's, it's treated like a public park. And I guess with that, I would make a motion to approve the ten thousand dollar web fund grant amount by Steve Blakeslee for Planky's Pond. And as a caveat, be open for any future funding requests on the second year.
Could I use, could I use that money to do the, the concrete to the dock and stuff and leave the parking lot till next year? No, because that.
Moved, didn't present.
I would almost, so, so there's a, there's a twenty-five percent requirement for you to, as needs to contribute to the project?
No.
So if you came back next year with a thirty thousand dollar project that included everything, they could theoretically give you twenty-two five to do that project? So maybe that might be your best route?
Could you get ten this year and contribute twenty-five, or get seventy-five hundred this year?
We could probably do ten this year, but you'd wanna do it for the project that you, that you've applied for. So that would be parking lot, unless you wanted to not do it tonight and submit a different project for the cement.
I think I'm gonna do that. I think I'll, because the cement part, you know, then that's all done and I'm not doing the parking lot, driving over it with cement trucks and all that stuff and doing the ramp.
Just a thought, what, what did you say at the funds end again, Jake?
One seventy-four.
I'm going with this. Just do it. You said at one fifty is what we're at for the fieldhouse, correct?
Right, but we don't have a budget or anything like that for the remaining.
I don't, I don't.
There, there's other ten thousand dollars that he's talking about. We don't have any.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
All we have is the twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar bid from, for the parking lot.
Okay.
But I could redo the application, come back next month to.
Yeah, would you have all the thirty thousand dollars worth of, if you just brought us a different project that had the entire cost that you're looking for, the thirty thousand?
The cast is gonna do the concrete, so I've already got him on board, so I'll get a bid from him. And then I got a bid from Matthew for the parking lot.
Yeah, so bring all that together, the whole thirty thousand, then we can just take seventy-five percent of that and, and have that be your application.
Because the other thing I worry about too, Steve, is pricing. I think everything's going up. You know, it's never gonna go, come down. So I'm afraid next year it'll probably be thirty-five thousand, you know what I mean? I think while it's fresh in everybody's mind, just fill out a new application and next month they can hold on the whole project.
All right, that sounds good to me.
So should I rescind my motion, Max? Since no one seconded it and we've had a lot of discussion?
Great idea.
I will rescind that motion, Jacob.
Sound good, Steve? Yeah, let's go that route.
All right. Perfect.
Alright, so next month's only May, so.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, number two is approved and I first reading and set public hearing for May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. For ordinance nineteen fifty-five dash twenty-three, amending chapter four thirty-four dash three, offenses against public safety to add the adoption of Wisconsin statute nine four one point two three one, carrying of a concealed knife. Chief.
Speed much shorter, I think. So we currently don't have a ordinance that covers carrying concealed knife that became state statute a few years ago. It's our only route when we come across this would be to charge a misdemeanor. We'd like to adopt the state ordinance, so then, you know, that is an option, a best punitive option. And we can go both routes depending on the circumstances. Same language as state statute, just a doc.
Questions for the chief?
What's the definition of a concealed knife?
Glad you asked.
Jagger, it's not more than that.
So it's any person who's prohibited from possessing a firearm under state statute who goes armed with a concealed knife that is dangerous weapon is guilty of class misdemeanor. So dangerous weapon has its own statute that's about a page and a half long. So yeah, it's not a, you know, it's a simple little.
Ah, pocket knife.
It's related mostly towards the intent of the possession.
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken.
Sure.
And, yeah, if you can't have firearm, then you shouldn't have a dangerous knife either.
Any other questions? Thank you. Discussion, I'll take a motion, it's that public hearing.
Take a motion, it's that public hearing.
Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by Branchway. Amy Ford. All favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll have that public hearing on May twenty-second. Uh, number three, approved and I second reading in public hearing for ordinance to provide nineteen fifty-four dash twenty-three, amending chapter one oh four, council meetings and rules of procedures to provide meeting cancellation flexibility due to lack of agenda items.
Tim.
Thanks, mayor. So I have, I tweaked the language, I think sufficiently to, to capture what your intent was. Now, currently, we're unable to cancel meetings based on lack of agenda items. Only able to cancel them for holidays. So we'd like the ability to do that if there's, if for the mayor, there's no agenda that, or agenda items that need to be desperately taken care of on a certain night and we're able to cancel the meetings. In response to that, we would post a canceled agenda, much like we do with committee members. The committees that have been canceled as well. So I guess, I think I got exactly what you guys were looking for, but if not, please let me know.
What is the timeframe prior to the meeting? How much?
Well, you can actually, you can post up to twenty-four hours ahead of the meeting time. But for council meetings, as you probably see, I normally get those on the Friday before.
Okay.
So we would know before then.
Okay.
Would this still be, no, this says it's a summer meeting schedule, is that still the?
It wouldn't actually be summer meeting. It would be available anytime that the, that the agenda wouldn't be.
Okay.
There wouldn't be enough items on the agenda to council meetings, so I could change that.
Up at the top, you're talking about intersection, wouldn't?
Yeah, just.
We definitely had a few earlier in the.
Yeah.
Year that would have qualified.
You guys are gonna lose those excellent seven-minute meetings.
Combine them into a twenty-one minute meeting.
Three weeks, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll take public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen fifty-four dash twenty-three? Stick around. Anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen fifty-four dash twenty-three? Final call, anyone wishing to speak for against the adoption of ordinance nineteen fifty-four dash twenty-three? Hearing no one, close public hearing, take it back to council. Discussion or I will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Branchway to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stevenson. Jake, roll call, Mary ready.
Aye.
Aye.
Branchway.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Gargano.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Convinson.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Recommendations from boards, committees and commissions. We have one item from the Plan Commission, that's to approve or deny your resolution forty-five ten dash twenty-three for a certified survey map for Crystal zero four two dash zero eight one nine dash zero 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 in the town of Winfield in extraterritorial zone. Brian, how you doing tonight?
Go take a mirror. So this property currently has two houses on it and the Peltons want to split it off, split it in two. So they have a house, a house on each one. And it's been recommended up through the channels, the town, ET and the Plan Commission all recommend approval.
Questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian.
Council discussion, I'll take a motion of one's order. Motion approved. Motion by Kenny.
Second.
Seconded by Branchway. All favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commission, committee, board of staff reports, Parks and Rec.
We met last week and had our first presentation by Avire Bechers about the corp, the corp plan, outdoor recreation plan, and timeline and some background information. Then we had a presentation by Historic Preservation about the Mackey family with the potential for a park name. And the Parks Committee will be reviewing some parks to have different names changed from generic in the upcoming future. And then Matt gave us an update.
Thank you. Public Works?
Public Works met last Wednesday. We reviewed some of the three large contracts with our dairies for the sewage plant. And they have committed into some really long-term forty-five-year contracts with us, which is all good news, representing roughly thirty-five percent of the cost of the project over the next forty-five years. So, and that went really well, very well received. And it's good news because it shows that our dairies intend on being here.
That's, honestly, that's very good news. Yep.
That was big. And then we also discussed what will be or likely would be the largest piece of equipment in the sewer plant. And by far the most expensive, the biosolid dryer system, big footprint in the plant. And that, we didn't choose, the, the committee did not choose the lowest bided project. But we chose one that has been approved in the state by the DNR and other agencies. So that's, that piece of equipment comes in just north of five and a half million dollars. So it, it's a big chunk. And now, B and B, Ben and Billy from Town and Country, our engineering firm, they were here to, to give us all that information. And now they can move forward with more concrete plans and cementals to, to different agencies. And then we had an update on current projects. As most of you probably already know, Laurel Street's already dug up, Sixth Street had a schedule. So, weather permitting, A one is on their way. That's, that was pretty much it.
Excellent meeting there. Utility Commission.
Utility Commission met on the seventeenth. We're currently accepting applications as we ramp up for the summer projects for fiber line workers. And we also need a light-speed customer service representative. The electric department is removing some large finds along Laval Street, repairing hotspots that had been detected and replacing aged poles. Water department is finishing up spring hydrant flushing. And as Dave mentioned, the Laurel Street and Sixth Street project is underway. Fiber splicing in the Fairfield and HH projects is complete and new customers are being connected. Fiber construction is underway north of Spring Green and south of Phil Point. is underway north of Spring Green and south of Hill Point. We also approved upgrades to our core router to increase broadband capacity and reduce wholesale costs. Broadband is getting to be a big, big user of, obviously, of the broadband. The internet and others using broadband, we just needed more capacity. There's some nights we're just banging right against the top of our capacity. So it's those Packer games.
That's right. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Plank Commission had a very short meeting, basically talked about the certified survey map that you guys approved. And we talked a little bit about accessory dwelling units that'll be coming in the future meeting. Library Board?
Library Board met. It was, it was pretty quiet, but the library is usually pretty quiet. Just a note that we approved, the Board of Trustees approved, over Memorial Day weekend, library's gonna be closed Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. That's longer than we'd normally close over that holiday. But the South Central Library System is moving to a different building in Madison. And so all the interconnected computers will be down. And so our services would be severely limited. So we opted just to close for those four days. We'll be back up. And South Central feels like they will be up and running on Wednesday. So hopefully that all works out. So.
All right. Zoning Board, CDA?
Uh, we met to review a second year funding for Hometown Fashions and the incubator program and approve that. So we will continue to have socks and underwear available down there for everybody.
Make sure I post that in the community page.
As well as lots of great items and shopping availability down there. So
I have a wide range.
Please check them out.
Very good. Any other committee, commission, staff member that you want to report? All right, Officer Mayor, just want to touch on tomorrow evening's Fireman Spaghetti Sucker. Definitely one you don't want to miss. Well, it looks to be dish, or also, they do the Fast and Furious drive-through, and that has become popular. So make sure you get out and support that endeavor. More on the horseshoe.
Nothing tonight.
Hey, Peterson.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Phil Peterson.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Al Kane.
Nothing tonight.
Matt Max.
Nothing for me.
I just see that look. Jake from City Hall?
I do have one thing. Jason reminded me at the beginning of the meeting that I didn't get an update from the election last time. Just wanted to say that we are super, super happy with this year's turnout. It's the highest spring election we've had since two thousand and ten. So just a shout out to my staff and all of our awesome coworkers.
That is amazing that I could, that you told me that. That's
Yeah.
That's kudos.
We also had election results at eight eleven. It was like somehow the smoothest, but busiest election. It was strange.
Before we move on to Tim, I do have one more thing. Definitely, I reached out to her on Saturday, heartfelt condolences from City Hall and the City Council and the rest of us to Anita Young with her mother's passing over the weekend here on, on Sunday. So we're definitely, have you and our thoughts and prayers, Anita.
Just for the non-public tour of South School Estates tonight, please meet me at door number five, if you're interested in taking the tour.
Perfecto. Mike, Gargano?
Nothing to late.
Jason Schulte?
Nothing to late.
Craig Branchway?
Nothing to late.
Sunny high?
Nothing to late, thanks.
All right. That'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, McCainy. I'll take it, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think so.
Door number five, on South.
Hey, Jay.